We will call this meeting in order. Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors, June 11th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Layland?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Dralka?
Here.
White?
Here.
Little?
Here. Would you please join us in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, moving on to item one, agenda received, is proposed or has amended?
So moved.
Any questions, comments for the agenda? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Other comments? Anybody like to speak to the board this time? It's not an agenda item. Okay, seeing now we'll move on to claims and payments. Resolution A.
Oh, you're talking to me. You have the list, uh, Lilian? Um, Blackhawk County claims are one hundred and sixty-two thousand, fifty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents.
Okay, any questions, anybody?
Move to approve.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. And do we have, um, Country View? Yep.
Yes, there's, um, six thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, um, for, I'm sorry, the total is seven thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. That's one thousand, four hundred and ten dollars to the Beecher Law Firm for, um, some of Eric Johnson's, um, cleanup work. And six thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars to United Healthcare for, uh, overpayments for seven residents.
Are we getting there then? This should be about the end of them. It's hard to say, really. Something could straggle in.
Right.
I'm gonna check with Brighton today to look at their list to see.
I, I think it'll be a while yet. Every now and then you'll get something, so. Okay, any questions on those? Roll call, please.
Motion to approve.
Second? Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Thanks, going.
Okay, moving on to item four, uh, project updates from the permitted heads and our elected officials. Morning.
Morning, board. Brian Brennan, Assistant County Engineer. Uh, the dry weather is helping a lot of our gravel road conditions. They are drying up. There still are several spots that we're monitoring. Uh, crews are out grading, spreading rock. Uh, they are trying to prepare a lot of areas for, um, dust controls. That's kind of the next thing coming up with some of this dry weather. Um, we're working through that. This is later, um, in the year than we normally get the first application down, just due to the conditions of the roads. So we're working with the suppliers, residents, whatever that may be as time comes, so.
Still working overtime?
Uh, right now, they are not. They're gonna be doing that a little more later in the month. Um, right now, we're kind of watching the weather for tomorrow and seeing what road conditions do for grading.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you. Morning, Rita?
Hi there. Rita Schmidt-Treasure. Just gonna let you and the public know that, uh, HR has given an opportunity for our staff to, and others in the county, to go to, uh, some professional growth sessions that they have next week. So customer service is one of the key, uh, items that they're gonna speak to. So, uh, I'm closing the office for that Wednesday from eight o'clock till ten fifteen. So the whole staff has the opportunity to show up for this meeting and, um, get some better skills on customer service and, and see what we can do to, uh, improve for the public. So just letting you and the public know that we will be closed. It is already posted. We have it on the website. Uh, crossroads will be closed the whole day, uh, so we have everybody downtown, so.
Don't you let security know so they can even tell people if they're.
And I gave them a, a, a sign too, so that they would have that at theirs, so.
That works.
We should be covered. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, moving on to item five, minutes approved from June 4th, 2019.
So moved.
Yeah.
Any questions in the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We do have a hearing today. We'll get to that here shortly. It's on, uh, budget transfers for the General Basic Technology Equipment Fund. Moving on to item seven, the consent of June, agenda being made with a single resolution.
Second.
Is there any questions on, uh, consent? Roll call, please.
Dralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item eight, which is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution of the service agreement with Blackhawk County and ACES, Cedar Falls, Iowa. Uh, this is for support services, an amount of nineteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars, um, a month be approved. Kim?
Yeah, so, um, this agreement is similar to last year. The body of the agreement is the same. The one thing that's changed is, um, we have included in here some extra project, um, server setup projects. Um, and it does have a, um, the contract is up for, I mean, uh, it's, is for a year rather than open-ended like in the past, so.
Is this dollar amount the same?
Dollar amount is the same as last year.
And this is a contract for how long?
One year.
One year, and then there's a sixty-day out clause?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Board, anything? Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Kim, anything else?
No, uh-uh.
Okay, then, um, roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Item B is a resolution of the service agreement between Blackhawk County and the Iowa State Association of Counties. Uh, this is for the HIPAA program with an annual fee of one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Kim?
Yeah, so this is something that we signed up for last year. Um, and includes training, which we've used for, um, staff. And then Deb and I, Debbie Bunger and I went down to a workshop. Um, we do have the opportunity to, to talk to Dorsey Whitney, the law, your law firm, as well as the attorney at ISAC about issues if we need to.
Is there an increase in this one?
No. Uh-uh.
Um, how many people have taken advantage of it? When you say some staff?
Right, the Health Department has used the training that they have provided, so that whole department and, um, I'm not sure if I'd had HR, but the auditor's office, I think, that, that has anything to do with HIPAA.
This is just for one year?
Right. Mm-hmm.
Yeah. We want to make sure you track that, so we can see if people are using, if it's worth it, so. Okay, anything else, board? Do we have a motion on this one?
No.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Moving on to item C, this is a resolution of the contract between Blackhawk County and Hudson Hardware, um, for the fiscal year of 2020, Gilbertville Maintenance Shop Mechanical and Plumbing Projects. Ryan, what's this one all about?
This is the plumbing and heating contract for the Gilbertville Shop, set to start. This is a budget expenditure for our capital in FY20. We have a July 1st start date on that. Um, we also have a separate contract here as well for the electrical portion of the work, and then we'll have another contract to follow for the main.
Okay.
Building in the coming weeks.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Anybody? Roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item D, a resolution of the contract between Blackhawk County and Ryan's Electrical Services for Mancony, Iowa. And again, this is in relation to the Gilbertville Maintenance Shop.
Again, just the electrical contract for the project. Will be starting here in July.
July. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to item E is a resolution of Best Bill from Kirk Rose Company for the purchase of conference room tables, forty, chairs, a hundred and fifty of them for our Pine Crest facility.
So moved.
A second.
Rory, is this under budget then?
Yeah. Morning, board. Rory Givin, Maintenance Superintendent. Uh, yeah, we had a budget of thirty thousand, four hundred dollars for this project, so yes, it is under budget.
We turned one down earlier because it was more than what we had.
Correct.
And that's money yet from this year?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? You have a motion?
Yes.
Roll call.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, item nine, other business. Resolution, amendment to the minutes of Board of Supervisors meeting, May 21st, 2019, to remove the wording Human Resource Director Deb Bunger. And it's just changing some language in there, I believe, correcting it.
Move to approve.
Second.
Deb, anything that's correct or whatever?
All right, Debbie Bunger, HR Director. So, um, the auditor's office will send us certified copies of minutes that pertain to actions that we had on the board. And I had just noticed when I got the certified that there was a comment made that actually belonged to a, the holiday policy, not the insurance policy.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Moving on to item B, this is a motion to request for purchase capital equipment submitted by Kim Veder. And this would be for eight laptops and docking stations, twelve thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Kim?
Yeah, um, this is replacing half of the, um, county attorney's lap, Assistant County Attorney's laptop. Um, we kind of scheduled this because I have the other half in next fiscal year, and then we can get them all in the same machine at the same time, so.
Where, where's the money on this?
It's in my budget, yes.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item C is a motion to request for personal, purchase of capital equipment submitted by Karen Dowes, uh, County Social Services. Uh, looks like a laptop of the docking station and two monitors.
So moved.
Second.
And again, this money is reimbursed by the County Social Services.
Right, Karen asked if there's any questions that.
Yeah. I think she sent a memo on that. We saw that earlier.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item D is a resolution of the road embargo, restoring vehicle load limits to the maximum legal limit for roadways on Barnes Ferry Road, Jepson Road, Miller Creek Road be approved. Ryan?
These are three of the gravel road or steel coat roads that we did, uh, embargo this spring, just due to the, the conditions. Um, these are removing the embargoes. We're happy with the conditions of those roads. Um, the ninety-day embargo would expire in next week, so this is just formally removing, uh, the embargo on those three. There is still two that remain embargoed. Waters Road is still embargoed, and then a portion of, uh, Young Road, Birdland Drive is still embargoed as well.
Sounds good.
A second?
Okay, anybody else getting questions? Roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, item E is a motion in addition to continuing in their present positions with the county auditor's office, Billy Joe Heath, Helen Stephan be appointed as interim co-finance director. This is effective May 18th, and this will go until we have a permanent finance director is appointed. And according to policy, each one get five percent increase for compensation. So again, uh, this will run through until we, um, hire a finance director. They are doing their own jobs, but they're also picking up, uh, some of the duties of the, um, finance directors.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, anybody got any questions on this one?
Are these union or non-union employees? I'm just curious.
None bargaining. Yeah. If they were bargaining, I imagine there would have been some stipulations or something.
Typically would, typically would put an bargain person in.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you for the work, by the way.
And May 18th must have been the date that Susan left, is that correct, or?
It's the following day, isn't it? I think she left on Friday, the 17th, and this is the next day.
Sounds good. Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F is a resolution of Blackhawk County Sheriff's request to be authorized to pursue a contract to purchase the land, approximately a hundred and twenty-two acres presently known as Pines Quarry. Sixty-six, thirty-five Dubuque Road, Raymond, Iowa, be approved direct to chair to sign. This is where the Raymond Range Training Facility, Sheriff's Training Facility is currently located. The contract would be between Blackhawk County, BMC Aggregates, with funds allocated from the sheriff's room and board funds. Uh, room and board funds, and then tax-based account with three pin, but the fifty thousand over the next three years. Tony, you're up.
So there's been a lot of, uh, email communication back and forth. I wanted to make sure that you were well aware of what our, uh, efforts have been and what our, uh, conversations have been and all the preparation that's taken place up to this point. Uh, don't tell Sherm Lundie, but, uh, the counter offer that they accepted is, uh, rather generous. So, uh, if you break that down to a price per acre, we've gotten a pretty good deal on this. We appreciate the offer, and we certainly appreciate the partnership of Basic Materials, uh, in making this offer to us. So, uh, quite frankly, as I've illustrated and indicated in multiple communications, this really gives us the opportunity to firmly and securely develop this property, uh, the way we've always intended to do so, and be better neighbors than what we've had the ability to do so far. That is, to give a setback, to give us, um, sound and, and, uh, barrier mitigation to make it safer, um, to mitigate noise, be better neighbors, and to do things on a more permanent basis than what we've been able to do as a leasing, uh, of the property.
Have you had a meeting with the people down there? You always told them that if anything else was done, you'd come back and talk with them.
Have I had a meeting with the citizens?
Citizens, yeah.
Nothing's going to change. Uh, the only thing that's going to continue to change is that we're gonna continue to further develop and improve, uh, the quality of that product. So we've, we've continued on the same track that I've always promised them. This allows me to do even more than what I promised them.
Some of the land, I understand, is in the city limits of Raymond?
The only portion that's in the city limits is land that we're already leasing, correct?
Okay.
How much land we got already out there?
A hundred acres.
And how many buildings we got on that land?
Four buildings right now.
How many are, how many more are going up?
Uh.
Permanent buildings.
That's up to the next sheriff, probably more than I.
Is, Tony, ninety percent of this land, is it water?
No. No, ninety, there's only eighteen acres in wa, in water.
Eighteen acres?
Yeah, that's, that's beside the question, it's not eighteen acres.
Okay, but you'll be taking.
It's where the old pit was.
Yeah. So you'll be taking the water too?
Correct.
You don't have that currently, the water.
We do. Uh, that's part of the leased area.
Okay.
Yep.
So, it's, so, yeah, just to reiterate, then that hundred acres is really the same hundred acres, nothing new.
We're adding twenty-two of the tillable acres that are currently under contract with a farmer.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Only change. And this was a question I should have asked, uh, previously, and I apologize, like I said, because the number isn't changing. The hundred acres that you're utilizing now, at some point, you'd made a decision or someone, or the decision was made that a hundred acres was a good, a fair amount, good amount for what you needed to do or what you wanted to do with.
Right, well, so the hundred acres, really, what this does is it marries all of that property that Basic Materials owns together. So they own a hundred and twenty-two acres. They didn't want to parcel off the twenty-two tillable, so they, they offered the whole hundred and twenty-two to us. The twenty-two additional is, for lack of a better term, the impact area behind our berms. So that, ownership of that area is sensical in the fact that if anyone else owned that, it's immediately behind the impact area of our berms. So for anyone else to own that doesn't make any sense. The only way to get to that property is through our range. Um, which, for now, the farmer that has that, we have a great working relationship with him. We know when he's there. Um, if anybody else were to take possession, and, and that would be weird. So, um, for us to own that and marry all of that total property up, that's what Basic Materials would have requested. That was the offer, um, and that's, uh, what we are entertaining here today. Um, and so certainly, and for us, that gives us twenty-two more acres of standoff distance in that impact area of where, the direction that we are firing, uh, our weapons. So, uh, that makes sense too.
The, um, uh, the new land that we're talking about, that wasn't in the original lease?
Correct.
Uh, ninety, ninety-year lease?
Correct. Yeah, this basically adds up twenty-two.
That was the ag portion. The rest of that stuff was all pretty much your old corn operation. All of that, that, uh, the, uh, where the lake area, where you go to Lake Hurley is, that's where that gun gun was, that's where the pit was. And the rest of that is all stockpiled early on when you ordered it. And none of that was utilized for ag. That twenty-two, uh, twenty-plus acres over there, but that north side up there, and that was used for ag. We were talking about this, obviously, ninety-nine-year lease, that would be the order. But also that property on the other side over there, you know, the real access is the, uh, their, the sheriff's facilities over there. So that would create an obvious issue over there with somebody trying to move in there. And it would be much better for them to have that, well, there's a barrier over there, potentially as a priority area or some other kind of use for that. So that's why it will be discussed, is that was why we would do include all of that over there. And that's that whole Pines Quarry area.
The, um, I'm trying to think of some of the questions, 'cause there's been quite a few of them over the last two or three days for the public, now that we get to meeting. Um, so the, the funding is gonna come from room and board, is that allowable expenditure out of that?
Yes.
For purchase of land?
This is the forty percent discretionary funds for the sheriff. We can spend it on whatever we want to spend it on that furthers the interest of the sheriff's office. This certainly is in interest, uh, of the sheriff's office to advance the capabilities of the training facility, to advance our, and enhance our capabilities in the training area. And every time we build something, every time we do something out there that is a permanent addition to land that we don't own, that's a danger. That's a, that's a jeopardy. Uh, so certainly, ownership of that property, uh, allows us to then plant trees, to build buildings, to build, uh, barriers, to create sound and buffering and, and all those kinds of things that, uh, would allow us to be better neighbors, so.
Um, also, I'm trying to think of some of the emails that we read. Um, you're also, there's other agencies out there using that?
Yeah, in fact, Waterloo today is, uh, putting on and hosting a, uh, junior academy for fifth and sixth graders out there today. The Iowa State Patrol is gonna be training with us out there tomorrow, um, with our agency.
What's, uh, estimated revenue you got on that when you bought?
Uh, we, we only charge five hundred dollars per year per agency, so we, we offset the actual real expense, which is only electricity out there. So when I tell you it's budget neutral, the only hard expense that we have out there is electricity. And so we offset, um, that with that five hundred dollars per agency per year for access fees.
So you're, you're opinion the, the additional twenty-two acres will, will offer improved safety of the, of.
Actually owning the entire property allows me to plant trees, allows me to buffer that twenty-five, or that twenty-two acres behind our berms and plant trees behind there, um, uh, and make permanency the developments that we're doing, um, with. Like I say, we're building, uh, an entire, uh, urban training facility, and we're doing it as garden sheds, so that we can move them around and slide them off the property if we had to. Uh, this allows us to make that more permanent.
Do you have to get, do you have to follow the zoning laws of Raymond then?
Sure, absolutely.
The areas that are in there?
Right now, I don't, because they're sheds. But if we were going to build something permanent, if that structure is inside the city of Raymond, we would do that through the city of Raymond, yeah.
Chair? We've received a lot of information on this, but I feel like the one component that's missing is I'd like more public input on it, because this is gonna impact, um, the people in the area.
In what way?
Um, I'd like their input. They have our phone numbers, they have our email addresses. I see Tim Jameson is here, I'm sure he's gonna do an article now. I feel like the component I'm missing is public input. I want to hear from the people who are gonna be impacted by this, whether they think it's positive or negative.
We, we did have, obviously, when it was brand new, um, we did hear a lot from the residents out there. I went back and looked at some of the articles, I think it was back in oh, nine when we did that.
Correct.
I believe it's been that long. Um, and I read some, some statements and, that some of the residents had out there. So there is some of that that you can research. Um, I'm sure Tim is going to probably have an article on this. I don't know if we should post something out there and let them know that this is gonna happen. Um, I know another, uh, question in that email, Tony, said that you thought you could buy that as a sheriff.
I, I could purchase it. I could purchase it today. I can spend that money however we want. I just don't know that I can own it, and that's kind of the question that Pete and I have kicked around. That's the question of the county attorney. Every time that we've done this, uh, owning real estate is something far different. Um, and that's where we, uh, we start getting into that gray area of the law. Um, I will certainly, uh, uh, make that, uh, purchase if that's the way you want me to go. Um, if the, the county board doesn't want to own the property, again, I, I do believe this is in the best interest of the sheriff's office. Uh, and so, uh, I can, I can spend that money, uh, on the things that I think are in the best interest of the sheriff's office, and, and I think, uh, the, the solvency and the, and the permanency of this training facility is in the best interest of the sheriff's office for the next hundred or thousand years. Um, so having the ability to do this with minimal impact on that account, uh, yeah, I think that's in the best interest of the sheriff's office going forward. Uh, but, uh, the advice that I've been got, that I've gotten from the very beginning in 2009, when we first approached this, was it always seems more feasible and, and a better approach to run the ownership of real estate through the county. Uh, when I buy a squad car, I don't ask you to buy a squad car, I buy a squad car. When I buy a piece of office furniture, I don't ask you to buy it, I buy it, but it's not my furniture, it's the county's furniture, it's the county squad car. Um, the only thing that makes this purchase somewhat different is it's real estate. Um, so I think there's, there's something different with regard to that. Uh, now, again, uh, in prior minutes, Pete has alluded to the fact that this is the gray area. I'm not afraid to go it alone. Um, in fact, I've, I've been rather successful over the years in having to do that, but I am following legal advice when they say the best approach is to have the county own it. Um, so today, if, if I didn't approach you, if I wasn't transparent, and I just said, absolutely, Sherm, you got a deal, and I, and I say, let's do it, I would still be forcing the board to sign a contract, um, to own property. And I don't think that that's transparent, and I don't think that's right. Um, if you want to wait and you want, uh, citizen input, I, I have no problem with that. But again, from the citizens in Raymond, nothing changes. We are still there, we still, uh, do the same functions that we continue to do from 2009 forward. 2009 forward. Nothing changes, except I continue to buy trees, I continue to build buffers, I continue to do improvements.
Taxpayers buy them trees.
No, they don't.
That's taxpayers' money.
It is not.
In a roundabout way it is. Think about it.
There, there is absolutely nothing that we do with that fund that has anything to do with tax dollars. Now, we, we, we use that money every, every way we can to save taxpayer dollars. So when I buy SWAT vests with that money, that's, otherwise I would have to come to you and ask the taxpayers to pay for that, certainly. But again, this is inmates paying for this range training improvement, not the taxpayers, it's inmates. That's the focus that I want you to have with this. The taxpayers aren't paying for this. It's the people that I go out and I knock on their door and say, you owe the taxpayers of Blackhawk County $20 a day for your time serving in the Blackhawk County jail. Some of those I can collect on, some of those I can't. But we're working our tail off bringing in, and you, you've got the charts in there of how much money we're bringing in per year. $50,000 out of that 40% isn't going to touch that.
The, Tony, the, um, is, is that a code that you're citing on the sheriff's authority on that room and board? I mean, you said it's, uh, the sheriff's prerogatory on where he spends that. Is there something in writing somewhere that states how that's supposed to be dispersed or?
I, I can get that for you, certainly.
I think that'd be good for the board.
Pete?
And then the other thing I noticed, you know, when Dan brought up the public part of it, I was reading them articles the other day, one gentleman there in, um, Raymond said he didn't, didn't really like the shooting range there, which obviously we heard from a lot of them.
Right.
But he was going to live with it as long as it was training our deputies and it wasn't regionalized. I wonder now if they look at that and say, it is regionalized now, because we're training other people out there than our deputies.
Well, every time that an agency trains out there, we're with them. So like I say, tomorrow the state patrol is out there, but they're training with our officers. Today, there is no shooting going on, but it's the junior academy, fifth and sixth graders are out there, we're hosting the Waterloo Police Department. We're, we're proud to do that, we're happy to do that. The other thing that's going on today in the large classroom is the first RFP for the Public Safety Software is going on in the large classroom. So you got simultaneous trainings going on out there at the same time. That's the kind of thing that this facility allows us to be able to do. Secondary Roads hosts their annual training out there, their safety training and their safety training day out there. Those are the things that I'm prideful that we're able to do with that facility. So I, I, I have no problem seeking public input, because everything that I promised that I would do, I've done. And I, I'm pleased with the results.
So if the board did, brooder, really didn't want to get involved with it, you said you're going to go ahead with it and purchase it?
I will, I will continue to pursue it, absolutely. Yep.
I'd say, I, I think I'm supportive of this project. It sounds like a reasonable move to, to improve both the effectiveness and safety of the, of this training facility. If we need to wait a week to get to public input, that's fine, but I think, um, let the public know that this is an effort that's going to actually reduce the sound and increase the safety.
And understand, this, this resolution is nothing more than you allowing me to continue to pursue the opportunity for contracting. At this point, we don't have final verbiage, we don't have, I mean, I've done a lot of legwork over the last three months in preparation for this, and I've tried to illustrate that to you, but we have not finalized a contract at this point.
Oh, but I think if we approved this, they were actually approving you to have a contract for purchase, so.
To pursue a contract?
Yeah.
Well, I think today was meant really just to kind of move the?
Absolutely. I'm looking to move this forward, I'm looking for your authority, again, being transparent.
The city council in Raymond, we'll see, has their meeting next Monday. Not that that means anything, but I mean, I'm sure they'll know about it by then, if we have an article in the paper and, um, maybe by then we'll get, I don't know, we'll probably get some contacts from the people like we did. Of course, there was only two, you weren't here, were you?
There was only two of you.
Yeah, only two of us. So I encourage you to go back and look at some of those. It was kind of a sticker shock to some of them, and they come after the board on it.
Well, the reason they all showed up is because I sent letters to every, uh, surrounding citizen, every homeowner, every property owner that touched that property to let them know.
Is that school still up there, Tony, in operation?
Yes.
Because I know that was a concern of a lot of them.
And again, that's kind of demonstrated that that concern was not realistic.
Well, there's a couple of requests there. You said you were going to get the boards up in writing, that kind of shows us the?
Yeah, I'll work with Pete Burke on the, on the language and?
And, um, hopefully the word will get out there. And, I mean, I, I don't know if you need this done overnight.
No. I don't want to leave basic materials hanging.
Essentially, the reason we talked about this all along, we went the 99 year lease period of time, so the board decision of ours, nothing's changed. You, you want to own the property, realistically, a 99 year lease, along the, uh, financial improvements out there with the opportunities out there, 99 years, you know, realistically, um, you know, maybe some of you have extended lifespan, but, uh, generally that situation over there, without being facetious.
That is a snide remark.
Listen, if it wasn't for sarcasm, I wouldn't have any of this, but that's decided. You know, in all, in realistic terms over there, nothing's changed, except you're getting under 27, 22 acres.
But the water was under the lease?
Yes, yeah. We included, so when we did that initially, we looked at that and then we included this as part of that area over there to expand that lease over there so that they would have all of that training, because they use that for scuba diving as well out there as training out there. That was all a part of it.
And the Water Safety Patrol.
Tony, do you know what, what that cost us in insurance out there?
That's one of the reasons why the first person I went to was Chris Faraday, and it didn't change anything, because you already have. I don't.
Or as far as, maybe that's more information we can get on what?
Yeah, I've been working with Chris.
We just had the meeting the other day and I'm sure it was on there, but, um, we can update and find out what that cost out there.
Realistically, the ownership makes more sense over there than the lease. So we looked at that, that way you've got the, to me, you've got the confidence, you've got the training facility out here, we own the operation, and the additional, where Tony and I talked about this before, uh, you've got the additional ag land over there that will serve as another barrier. And this gives him some opportunities over there, uh, berm and trees and so forth. And in actuality, because I sound a little telepathic, there are equip dollars that are available over there that can be used for windbreaks, by the way, through the NRCS office and the sort of water conservation district, just ahead of my heart. So you wouldn't have to worry too much about that, that, that either side of it. Just to pursue that, that was why we went to that, include all of that so that he can have a package deal, it's there and you can develop that and you can have the opportunity to go and accommodate. What we put into it is going to be ours over here and we can make it last and serve the public a little better. And that's why we seem very interested in working with it.
Rory, um, what, you have any projects coming up for the jail? Larger ones?
Uh, the large project we have coming up is the boiler change out for FY20.
What's cost on that?
A member who serves me right, it's right around $450,000.
Are we borrowing that money or?
Uh, I believe Susan had put that under, uh, CIP, uh, portion.
That's boiler? I thought we replaced that once already.
Uh, there, there's three boilers, two are original, one was redone in 2003.
The $400,000, that's what we have?
That includes boilers and the hot water heaters for the facility.
Wow. I know we've changed hot water heaters in the back.
Pardon me?
Hot water heaters, I know we've changed.
The, the hot water heaters that are in place were changed out soon after the, the jail was opened. The original hot water heaters, they found out real quickly, were not sufficient.
Yeah.
Um, so yes, those were changed out, but it was, uh, soon after the jail had opened up. Uh, so they, they do have some age on them. What you might have remembered is there's probably been, since I've been here in the 10 years, uh, we've repaired those hot water heaters probably three different times.
Okay.
So what we're looking at is a much more efficient, uh, system. Uh, we're looking at combining the, the domestic hot water, uh, with the boiler system as a whole. So, uh, we're looking at, uh, increasing the efficiency of the system.
One of the things that we have started doing is shouldering a lot more of those kinds of repairs and, and expenses through the inmate commissary fund, which is about, it's over half a million dollars now.
Absolutely.
So you're charging, uh, janitorial fees back?
Yes, we break out the janitorial fees for all the different entities and?
Okay, and then maintenance, is there any maintenance out there?
Uh, at the range?
Yeah.
No, we do not serve any maintenance. The only, uh, there's been a few occasions where we've helped Tony out with snow removal, uh, but in the last couple of years, uh, they've used our pickup in the mornings and they have it back to us before we're ready to go. So, um, that's really our only relationship that we've had with Tony and the range.
Okay. Gordon, is there any other questions that you'd want researched, whether it be by Tony or Pete or Dana or anybody? I mean, the insurance one, we'll find out what that costs. Um, he's, Tony's going to find out about the, um, those funds, if there's something, a code or something on those.
Public input.
Is there anything else that you can think of?
But that he mentioned, that Dan mentioned, the public input that Dan mentioned.
Yeah, that, um?
You're just going to stand by and wait for information from, you're going to do a story on this? Maybe?
I'm, I'm sure once it gets out there, if it's anything like in 2009, and maybe it won't be that bad, maybe it will.
Again, since we take an occupation and we've done exactly what we said we were going to do, we've gotten compliments by the, by the steering committee that's been out in Raymond. They thought it was going to be bad and we did what we told them we were going to do and they've been impressed that it's not as impactful as they thought it was going to be, uh, because we followed the rules and the guidelines that they helped us establish. Uh, so I, I don't think you're going to find near the concerns that you think you might.
Well, we'll see, and then they do have a, um, council meeting next Monday and, um, it'll spread quick up there, it's not that big of a community. Is there any other questions, anybody?
I have just one word question for Sherman, just because you know the land well and I respect your expertise in conservation. What are some of the practices you would recommend, um, Tony would do if, if we take possession of this spot?
Sherman, if you come up to the mic, we'll?
Sorry, sorry, Sherman.
It's all right, we're all down the code.
There are a couple of questions. One of them is, you've got a 99 year lease, it's already there anyway, so this really doesn't change too much, it just gives you that control. In terms of conservation, um, there, there's some options over there along that north end over there. You could put a row of trees over there, um, you know, a windrow would probably be something that you might want to do over there. Some of the things, we've worked with Tony all through this time, since the folks took it over, the sheriff's department took it over, is that the field was tiled over there. Uh, what we did was to, uh, address the drainage issue, because it is downhill. We addressed the drainage issue, so it was not carrying any sediment over here, so it's collecting over here, uh, so that we're not running it off onto the property, otherwise getting things wet. But certainly a windrow across that top end and along the sides over there would make a big difference as well. That would help to improve a, a sound barrier over here. And there's also potential too, to put up another berm over there for that, for that reason. And it depends too, if you want to continue leasing the ground for farm, or if you wanted to, um, convert that back into a prairie area, that's a possibility. Uh, one of the things that Tony and I talked about might be working with you and I Prairie on Farms, uh, group out of there, that's with the Tall Grass Prairie area. And we work with them, with the company, over there in two or three sites over there, and it works, it's one of the ways to take that, uh, area over there. Farm, it's, it's medium farm ground, all right, not the best in the world, but it's a medium, uh, farm, uh, ground.
And he's gonna, he's gonna be building on some of that, isn't he, for his town?
Uh, not up there. I, well, that's up, you know, whatever he wants to do up there, but that's, you know, that would give you a nice bear, uh, area over there, plus, uh, a, a natural area, I would think anyway. So I would work with Prairie on Farms for part of that over time. You may want to rent the farm ground out for next year for revenue, you know, because that's, that's one option over there.
Is it rented now?
Yes, it is.
How much revenue is he getting a year?
That comes to the BMC. Thank you.
Okay, you're done.
Yeah, uh, no, it's, uh, I, when we work, one of the things I expect, Tom, for our people, our rental rates are much below the average. One of the reasons for that is I have an expectation of, uh, conservation tillage, no till, strip till, uh, cover crops, so, uh, we keep ours down so that our owners can profit and so forth.
That's fine.
But anyway, I'm not trying to be facetious over there.
No, no.
But that's an option over there if you wanted to, but over time you can gradually make those kinds of changes, Chris, so that you could do all of that over there, which would improve and enhance the property and also create a better barrier over there and also give them some training opportunities as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yeah.
And my, my thinking on this whole issue are, there are many complexities to it, but the one, um, and I realize that, uh, the funds that we're getting from the room and board are at the discretion of the, uh, the sheriff, the elected sheriff. Uh, you know, and the question I have is how does this, uh, assist us in mitigating recidivism? So that these individuals are not coming back to jail? That's the one component I'm struggling with. Uh, it's a lot of land, it's 122 acres, uh, so the public input is very important to me. Uh, if the sheriff thinks he can go it alone, why doesn't he?
And you may just have to do that, Tony, I don't know.
I have no issue with that either.
No, I, 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 we talked about that, so.
The, the, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the one problem you have is the sheriff is not going to be able to own this land. This has to be county owned land, just like the sheriff, it's the sheriff's jail, but it's really the county that owns the land of the jail.
Well, and I understand that, Pete, but it's just like the scenario, he buys the squad cars, we don't, but they're county cars. He buys the land, it's county land.
Well, that's true. It will be county land.
Yeah. And it's the same thing with conservation. I think they make purchases out there that don't come to us, but they're still county land. So, I don't know, it's something we can look into, there's got to be?
Well, I, I, and I don't know, I've put some feelers out, I don't know that this has been, uh, even discussed, but I have no problem, uh, purchasing it, entering into contract. Again, I sign for every vehicle that we purchase, I sign for tons of things, uh, that you end up owing. I have no problem with any of that. My effort and my issue is to be transparent with you, uh, and to be transparent with the public. Uh, so if, if, uh, if that gets me in trouble, so be it, but I certainly have no concern.
And I think we've had that transparency today.
Yeah.
So I, I think that's out there, um, and the board has just made some requests, you know, they want to make sure.
Absolutely.
It's there and, and I think so, um, either way, but I think it, it'll always be county property, um, anything that's bought in conservation and, so. Anybody else?
For, uh, public, um, input, how much time do we think we want to?
Well, I mean, I'm, I, it's not up to me, but I'm not going to say a week, I mean, I don't know.
No, I didn't mean, I just meant?
And if you want to have a vote today on this resolution, we can vote today, either go through or it won't go through.
Well, if there's more information though that you'd like, I mean, that others want.
I've still got questions. I, I just heard from Sherman that he's got all these trees and stuff out there, that it's knocking down the, you know, the sound barrier and stuff. And the berm, I'm still concerned about that. The only thing I, I'm confused on that is, um, hearing that supposedly rounds have made it through there. I don't know how the hell that would ever happen if it was built right. And, um, all I can say is maybe it just needs to be a little bit higher.
That's happening this summer, riding 10 feet to it.
And, you know, sure, the people ain't, aren't complaining now because it's there, they got to live with it. But they don't have to, you know, and Mike made this statement a while back, or maybe it was a former, about buying more land. We don't need any more land, taking any more land out of, you know, the county doesn't need to own any more land, period, as far as I'm concerned. We've got, we drive around town, see all these empty spots, it's like in, in the city limits too. It, it does, doesn't make sense for us to be buying that land up.
Well, I think maybe we ought to give, um, every board member a chance to do a little bit more research. Um, maybe we'll get some answers to some of our questions and maybe we'll hear from the residents out there, maybe we'll hear from the city council there. And, uh, we can go by there, because, I mean, it's not a, not an emergency thing, is it, Tony?
Nope.
I don't think Sherman is going to take it and sell it to somebody else, or he might, he ain't telling me what he's renting for or anything, so.
Yeah, you'll lose that right.
Hope the opportunity presented itself. I've educated you as soon as the opportunity presented itself and we started working on it, so.
But, um, um, the key is, like I said, you got a 99 year lease for a dollar, what is it, the dollar a year there?
Yeah.
So, I mean, you're?
It goes in my retirement fund.
Yeah.
So, anybody else? Is there any information? And again, if you think of something after today, we can forward it to whoever you think and, um, I'm sure we'll hear from people. I mean, yeah, three of you weren't here in '09, but two of us was and?
Well, I can see initially, there would be a lot of interest, people know you're going to start having that.
Yeah, the kids was a factor, the school and all that, so.
Sure. Sure, but apparently their questions have been answered, so I look forward to hearing if there's any input and what that is, so.
Is that all right, board? So simply what we'll do today, we just won't take any action on that and once we have everything sorted out and everything, then come back if the board's ready. Tony?
I'll work with Pete and we'll get you some answers sooner than later.
And if you have any other questions, make sure you forward them to the appropriate person. We'll see what the residents say. I'm sure we'll get some calls, but who knows? So, okay, sound good?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good, good information, really, good talk. Okay, we do have a hearing now, it's 9:50. It's on a proposed budget transfer from the General Basic and Technology Fund. Item one is a motion received, place unfilled proof of publication.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second one's a motion to close the hearing after oral written comments.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any written comments?
No, sir.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And the third one's a resolution, that's where we're gonna talk about authorize a direct make transfers within the various FY19 operating. So this is FY19 money, right? Is that correct?
It, it could be either way. I mean, if you're doing it now, it'd be FY19, but this is just fund balance money, it's gonna be there either way.
Oh, okay, okay. So if we didn't do it now, we can do it for FY20?
Yes.
I thought we were doing it now for FY20, those capital improvement projects that were in 2020.
That's what I thought.
I think that the capital improvement projects that are budgeted for FY20, there's already funding in there. This, and you know, I'm not the person who set all this up, but if I'm not mistaken, this is just an idea that Susan had to, to move funds, to make them available for other capital projects that you might anticipate that aren't necessarily already budgeted for.
So these transfers are coming out of the general reserve?
Yes.
And they're somewhat being targeted for certain areas, but at the same time it can be pulled back.
Right.
With board action.
Yes.
Now, there was one in there that I didn't understand and there was, I believe it was 50,000 for the veterans, but we budgeted 210 for FY20. Why would we be transferring another 50,000?
I think, I was, or I think the conversation I had with Susan is when we were looking at doing this earlier, it was so that in case that project was able to get started before the start of the fiscal year, that's what the initial 50,000 was.
So therefore there's no need to do it now because obviously there's two weeks, we'll be in the new fiscal year where we budgeted the 210,000 and certainly don't want to add another 50,000 to that fund.
We, well, we didn't budget, I don't believe, we didn't budget for the full amount in 2020. I think we.
Rory, did we budget 210,000?
Yes, 210,000 was presented at budget time for the remodel of VA Center.
Minus the 50,000.
The 50,000, I don't, I'm not aware of that, I don't recall. I'm assuming that might have been set aside for expedited architect engineering.
I think we thought we'd start maybe some of that this month, whatever.
But you don't think we budgeted the full amount?
Well, that's what I meant, the full amount minus the 50, but I, but if you think that was just for engineering costs, then we're fine.
That's my guess, without.
And we did.
Yeah, I know we took action to budget the full 210.
210.
Yeah, I thought so too.
So the 210 plus 50,000 for engineering perhaps.
Well, I don't know, does it say, was that note you had up there?
Pardon?
I don't know if we said 50,000 for engineering, I thought that was out there.
Just VA renovation, it just said VA renovation.
What's budgeted, I'm, I'm looking at and this is something that I might be able to put up on the screen, but I'd have to look.
No, that's fine, Grant, we've all had the information.
All right, but what is in, currently in the FY20 budget is 762,974,000 dollars for capital budgets. And if you look at that list that shows CIP with the jail boiler, courthouse carpet, platter remodel, courthouse lobby doors and VA renovation, the 50,000 figure, that comes up to 632,974. And then the technology fund, election equipment of 80,000, Tyler Content Manager for 50,000 for 130,000. Those two figures together come up to the 762,974 that is in the budget for capital projects. So that's all budgeted for. If we're talking about moving additional funds, that would just be money that would just be pre-placed for other capital projects. It would be money that's currently in the, in the general fund reserve, you would be moving it into capital projects fund, actually two different funds, one for CIP and one for technology and that would lower your capital, I'm sorry, your general fund reserves and create a reserve for capital projects.
And somewhat, is that the reason why we're doing this?
That's right.
Because we have such a high reserve that this is a way of, of book numbers, moving numbers around.
That was part of the discussion.
Like I said, it lowers your reserve because we're way too high and it puts money in other areas.
Yeah, that was part of the discussion. I think the way Susan would have expressed that is you are putting money aside for the future so that when you get to another project that's a large dollar item, you don't have to say where's that money coming from, you already have some money reserved for it.
And kind of gives, kind of provides a stabilizing.
Yeah, stabilizing your.
As long as the board leaves it alone. Does any board attempt to give all that money if they choose to?
That's, that's right. I mean, it's, it's there to use for whatever you think the best purpose of it is.
Basically what you're moving it for is one reason only, you got too high a reserve, like we said, at budget time for the last two or three years and this is how we're gonna burn it down a little bit.
And I think this would actually be a benefit for the incoming finance director because it would give them a leg up and they wouldn't have to expend time and effort to formulate this gap, and I call it a gap, but, and would let them know our intentions for this secondary money, I guess I would call it.
Yeah, I look at on the other side too, Dan, is this something that should wait for the new finance director? They get their feet on the ground. I mean, this isn't something that's gonna be spent tomorrow because we're plugging it away for the future. Is this something that they should, he or she should be involved in?
Well, we're not necessarily plugging away for the future. I mean, we're talking about doing this kind of consistently every year, but I said the million dollars, we spend at least a million dollars in capital improvement projects every year, so we know there are different projects even that we've gotten talked about. The Veteran Center was one, obviously, but we talked about the solar project being a potential project out there. I know there's, we talked about the possibility of maybe we don't want to bond at some point in time, we would maybe.
We are bonding.
Well, I mean, new bonding for the roads. We have still got.
But we are gonna bond for the roads and it makes you wonder, why would you borrow for debt when you got money you're right now putting in different areas for one reason, one reason only?
That's exactly why.
Reduce your reserves.
Yes, and I'm sure we'll still have reserves even when we have.
Oh, I'm sure, I mean, we want to keep them around that 25, 26%.
On, we're at 37, I think we said right now. And so I said we have.
I kind of, to be honest with you, like I stated earlier, I kind of wish this was done at budget time where it really belongs, not in June of the middle of the year, especially when you're dealing with, now, we're putting it in FY19, but it'll be in there for FY22. And then my other concern too is if it's in technology fund and I don't, I'm not talking about Kim or anything, but does ID, IT director think that's her money and then he can spend it?
No, that wasn't, that was the other thing that we're doing. It actually goes into, is it general, it's board super, general board supervision or something like that.
It'll be in, be in the capital projects fund and it, it's not going to be part of the IT budget.
No, I, I understand that.
It becomes, I think, the money from the supervisor standpoint that we have more control over, correct?
Right, it, it's not something that a department head or elected official.
Making these transfer, what's that take our reserves down to then?
Well, just a second, I can get that.
I think Linda just stated we're around 37, I thought we were just a hair higher than that.
Might have been 38, I wasn't sure if 37.
Okay, Rory, could you put that up now, please?
And I think the current figure is even before country view is settled.
Right.
Well, you just get too much money, Dan.
Okay, so.
Someone use it.
You can see on here that the top part, that shows what Susan recommended, putting a million dollars in CIP and 300,000 in technology equipment fund.
Yeah.
And down below, the, the left side is general fund with a budgeted amount of about 40.4 million dollars and so 37.6% of that is what's in unassigned fund balance right now, that 15,200,000. If, if you took out the 1.3 million dollars, it would go down to 34.3%.
Did you just do that math in your head?
I did it on that spreadsheet right there.
Where's that answer again?
That was impressive when it.
Oh, okay.
She said yes. So we'd still have the 34%.
It's, it's still gonna be an issue that the board's gonna have to look at at budget time. I mean.
Oh, I think that's.
You know, my, I've always said that you can't raise taxes when you got that kind of money sitting there yet because you're over taxing, so. It, again, only takes it down to 34%, it shows you how high we were.
Yeah.
And.
But it took a while to get there too.
Yeah, true.
It didn't, didn't happen over.
No, it did, but it took a good 10 years to get there and.
Yeah, because, yeah, 12 years ago we were.
And it could be done tomorrow, you know, you know how things go sometimes, but anyway, so.
I guess it's options certainly going forward. We can use it to buy down those.
It's not a huge amount we're doing today. I prefer every, always done at budget time, but this gets spread out, so it's really whatever the board wants to do.
Well, you know, you mentioned it was for 2019 and we're actually doing it in 19, but.
Well, it's gonna be in there in 20.
But it'll be for projects for 20 and going forward, so it's not like.
Yeah, but don't we have projects for 20 already budgeted for?
Right, that's the 762,000 we're there, right?
That's, yeah, that we needed to come from there.
But Rory and I also had a conversation yesterday with people from solar and looking at moving some of that stuff forward down the road.
It's another discussion another day.
Yeah.
But I firstly, the 210 we got budgeted for FY20, which I think we have it all in the 50, there wasn't 50,000 dollars for.
Well, 210, what are you talking about, 210 for the VA? That would more than cover it, wouldn't it?
I would have to, I'd have to go back and look on the, the shared server that everybody has access to, a sheet had broke down each department, so I'd have to go back and see if the VA had something, you know, outside of this for that 50,000.
I'm pretty sure it was just the 210 and that was the total amount.
It is and Rory indicated that.
This 50,000 was, was just in case we had opportunity to move forward.
Rory indicated the, the new project shouldn't even come near that.
Right.
Because you're not taking the walls down and everything, so I confident we're in good shape there, so that's, that 50,000 there is a little, I just want to make sure if it's got that label on there that certain people don't think that's something they can spend.
Well, once this is put into our funding, that more supervision, they can't spend without our approval. So it's not like some, that was the change from taking it from the different departments and putting into that board general supervision category that then it requires our approval, it doesn't stay in their account and they could spend it if it was, you know, came in under budget, an item came in under budget. This way.
It's probably good to have something like this, I mean, you know, we usually fare pretty good. I know one city tried it here this, six months ago and raised their taxes so high that the state took them down.
Well, that's not, we've been.
And it was money for future projects in the bank.
But they were taxing for it, you have money set aside, so you don't have to tax for it.
Well, the money comes somewhere at one time.
That's right.
I think they used it to, yeah, and then they got shorted and.
This is a way to use it prudently, the money that has.
Well, I think we've been doing it prudently anyway for the last 10 years, Grant.
But you also want to lower that fund balance.
Yes, we do. We don't want to raise taxes, we want to get it down, so.
This is a step in that direction.
Well, it's a small amount, so I don't have a concern if that's what the board wants to do. I wish it was down at budget, but it's not, it's sitting here today, so.
Well, I for one support this, I support the figures, the proposal, and in the future I want us to, I, I support the solar program that the county is looking at proceeding with and I would like to keep the funding for that separate from this.
Right.
And I think we're, we're gonna have to have a, a meeting, probably a work session on that because I'm, I'm somewhat in favor of it too, but the projects they brought forth on those garages for the engineer, that, that wasn't feasible. I mean, it, like, I don't think they can do it for this courthouse, I don't think there's enough room for it.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, you'll have.
Yeah, but the, the money savings and the time payback and everything on those garages out there is, that's not a very good program for test.
I think.
And anyway, I think we need to have another discussion.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll be having a work session on that really soon.
Sure.
We're gonna have one more meeting as a.
As a committee.
Committee before we come back to you guys.
Because, well, yeah, there's a lot of information.
Rory, were you gonna say something?
Well, I just wanted to mention that the last meeting that we had, I think it was called a strategic planning committee meeting with Susan, and that could be, this is not my expertise, but Susan's vision, I think, was one to drive the reserves down, but then also to build that, that bank and develop a CIP committee to prioritize projects than to bring in front of the board at budget time. And I think her goal, and I could be, I could be wrong, but I think the ultimate goal was to flat the tax askings each year by having this line item available. So it's kind of twofold, it was one, bringing the reserves down, second, having this CIP fund so we wouldn't, the board would not have to tax for some of these larger projects that come up. And that's just, was my take out of that strategic planning committee meeting. So whether that helps or not.
I think everybody's in agreement.
Yes, thank you, Rory.
I'll offer my motion to approve.
Prudently.
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
So the, it's for the million in the CIP and the 300,000 for.
Yes.
And you can keep it FY19 because if it goes in there, it'll be in there in FY20.
In two weeks.
In two weeks, unless somebody spends it.
Keep your way from them.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Treelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Worf?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, item 10, and reports or information from the board at this time.
Just.
No, you go ahead, boy. I'll just give a, a quick update on one of the things I presented on from the NACO Legislative Conference, the opportunity zones. I'll be participating in an all-day workshop with the city of Waterloo tomorrow about kind of their plans for the three different zones and their vision, just so we can stay up to speed about how this community can take advantage of this, this opportunity for the community. And so I'll be sharing an update on what I learned of that tomorrow at next week's meeting.
Sounds good.
Great.
Also, last Wednesday I attended a program put on by North Star, every year they do a play, and this year it was Shrek, and it was very inspirational to see these young and middle-aged people that are special needs get up there and put on a play and it was, they expected 300 to 400 maybe in the, in the morning session, had over 1,000 at the morning session, I didn't go to the evening one, got other things, but it was well worth the time and I think it touched a lot of people's hearts, you know, to see what was going on.
Grant, is that ISAC that wants to come? We're gonna have ISAC here representative and if I'm not mistaken, Grant, you can interrupt me, they're gonna come and kind of explain some of the changes in the legislators, you know, we have that budget change and things like that and what else was it, Grant?
From my understanding, we'll have people that, from ISAC who are lobbyists for county issues and so they will be explaining changes that the legislature made and, and their activities in supporting and opposing different legislation. They would also like to hear from you as to things that the county is doing and if there's something, if we could give them a tour of the building or something else around the building, I know they'd appreciate that, they do that in other counties that they visit as well.
We set that up.
When were they coming, Grant?
When, it's July 20?
Yeah, well, I'll have Dana send that out, it'll be at a regular board meeting. Yeah, well, I'll let Dana send that out, it'll be at a regular board meeting, and I, Rachel Bennett is the one I've been talking to, but I don't know if she's, it'll probably be representing.
She, she won't be one of the ones coming, but she said that Jamie.
Cashman?
Yeah, Cashman and Lucas Binkin will probably be here, and possibly Bill Peterson, the executive director, and Kristy Harshbarger, the assistant director.
It'll be some good information that day and give you a chance to come up with some questions and even ask them that day, and Rory, maybe you might want to get with myself or Grant or Dana, maybe we can set up a tour, just not only of this building, but if they have time, something else, we can get the flex car and, you know, we can check with them ahead of time, see if they'd be interested if their timetable let them, so.
I would recommend the Pinecrest building just because it's a great example of a, an old historic building that has a very, is very energy efficient and possibly even more energy efficient in the future, and that's a good example for other, other counties as well as, I think, our, our, our new jewel, the Hartman Reserve.
Yeah, once we get, once we get closer to that date, then we'll check whether to see if they're gonna be available for some time, we'll take that up and set it up. Rory will probably be buying lunch.
For the board's information, next week we have the Urban County Coalition, Gary Grant is gonna be here to present the legislative kind of wrap-up, too.
Is that next week?
Yes.
Okay, Deb, you didn't have policy next week, did you?
Yes.
Okay, because we got that Urban County Coalition is gonna be here also for an update, but we can get them. Okay, is there anything else?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I would just like to offer condolences to the family of Tim Staley, longtime county department head, he was the director at the youth shelter and county social services or general assistants, as it was known at the time, wonderful guy, passed away last